Okay, go ahead. Oh, nope, you're muted.
My computer automatically muted me. At this time, I'd like to call the September 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Niskuna zoning Board of Appeal to Order. Lynda, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Present.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Present.
Ms. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Present.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the August 2021 meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on this?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion's been made, is it seconded?
I will second, I was sorry, I was trying to get off mute. I will second.
The motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, hearing no discussion. Can we vote on the minutes?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Abstain.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. If we could please call the first case for the evening.
The appeal of Charles Cooper for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 66 Lori Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to maintain a 10-foot by 14-foot shed, partially within the side and rear yard setbacks. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The shed at 140 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet and a rear setback minimum of 25 feet. As constructed, the shed is located 14 feet from the side property line and 2 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a 6-foot side yard setback variance and a 23-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Nine notices were mailed out, two responses.
The first one from Monday, September 13th regarding the opinion on zoning board of appeals. To whom it may concern, I recently received a letter about an appeal process regarding a shed at 66 Lori Drive that is partially within the side and rear setbacks. Unfortunately, I cannot attend the meeting on the 22nd, but wish to submit my opinion for the record. I live at 70 Lori Drive and wanted to express my approval for the Bobb of Stated Appeal for a variance. Please let me know if you require anything further from me. Thank you, Kevin Weinberg, 70 Lori Drive, Niskuna, New York. The second one, September 14th, concerning the zoning board of appeals, Charles Cooper variance. To the zoning board of appeals, concerning the board of appeals hearing regarding a 6-foot side yard setback variance and a 23-foot rear yard setback variance for Mr. Cooper, we stand in favor of granting these variances. Mr. Cooper is a well-respected neighbor on Lori Drive. He is of the highest character and is heavily involved in our community and the neighboring Birchwood Elementary School, where he helps to maintain the nature path, install birdhouses, and helps to maintain the community garden at Birchwood. If his shed is moved closer to the property line, it would only serve to further help the community as it may aid him in providing a shorter walk with his tools to the community garden and pathways. Respectfully, Benjamin and Rebecca Taylor, 58 Lori Drive, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Okay, at this time, I'd like the applicant to come forward. Please state your name and address. And then, could you please let us describe for us the application that you're making, what you've done to mitigate the need for your variance, or why it couldn't be mitigated?
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, my name is Charles Cooper, residing at 66 Lori Drive. I do casually go by my middle name of Mike, so some of those letters of support may have addressed me as such. Excuse me. As I did state in the request for variance, I did install this shed as a replacement kind when we bought the property. I recognize today that I didn't replace those two question marks that would have been about five or six years ago. I apologize for that error in my paperwork. Excuse me. And did install a shed that would be considered a major accessory structure. And I did that without soliciting a permit, and I should not have done that at the time. Nonetheless, I would request either an acceptance of the variance as presented, or if a compromise could be entertained, the setbacks of a minor accessory structure would be much easier to tolerate. If I were to meet the setbacks of a major accessory structure, this shed would land squarely in the middle of the backyard and obscure use of the backyard. The tree now, it's used as any backyard, it would be for recreation, a variety of uses. So, again, if a compromise were to be met, I would be glad to move the shed sufficiently to satisfy the minor accessory structures, get it a little further away from that rear property line. But to meet the major accessory structure setback requirements would be, I think, very burdensome and, in my opinion, unnecessary. So I'd be happy to entertain questions, or if there's more I should offer, please, so direct me.
Mr. Cooper, this is Keith Frary. I'm here.
Good evening, Keith.
How long has the shed been there?
We moved in five or six years ago to this neighborhood, after having left the Birchwood neighborhood a couple of blocks away.
But you put the shed in when you moved in?
Yes, there was an existing shed at this location, a prefab kit-style shed that was caving in upon itself. And I replaced that shed with the shed that exists today, on the same footprint, slightly larger than the shed that was there, but otherwise in the same location.
Okay, so the shed that was there had been installed by... Do you know when that shed had been put in?
I don't.
You just inherited it and it was in bad shape?
Correct.
So you took... The shed that you put in that exists there now is just... It's slightly bigger than the original one?
Yes.
Or you put it at the same location, it's just a little bigger?
Yeah, and it does occupy a slightly larger footprint, but it doesn't change the side lot setback, nor does it change the rear lot setback.
Right.
That existed at the time.
The... And correct me, Laura, if I'm wrong, but I believe the triggering size is 120 square feet is the triggering size for needing to meet the setbacks. Had it been 10 by 10, or even 11 by 10, you wouldn't be required to meet the setbacks. But the fact that it's in place now and built, it's not like you can take your chainsaw and cut two feet off of it or something like that, so...
I would very much not like to do that.
I imagine not. I wouldn't want to see you do that. I noticed from the drawing that you submitted in the packet, in the... It looks like pretty much the dead center of your yard, there is a garden, a pool, all that type of thing, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And this shed is used for what? Just storage?
Yep, the shed houses lawn implements, hand tools, power equipment, seasonal accessories.
Okay. All right, I'm good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir.
I believe one of the neighbors indicated that you helped maintain a nature trail and I guess it's on the school district's property?
Yes.
Okay, and you do that as a volunteer, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that is... Your shed is closer to where that... As it exists now, it's closer to where that nature trail currently exists?
Yes, my rear property line abuts the school's property.
So to a certain extent, it's a more convenient location to assist you in helping out with the nature trail? And to the best of your knowledge, none of your neighbors have ever complained about its placement?
No.
Where it currently sits?
Nope.
So I noticed in your application, you had alternatives to the placement of the shed, which was refreshing in its completeness. But would you agree that where the shed's currently located is the most feasible for your needs?
Yes, I cannot imagine it being in another location, given the existing vegetation and other landscaping and structures that inhabit the property.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cooper, this is Katrina Pacheco. I also have a few questions. Hopefully you can hear me.
I can, just fine.
Thank you. The neighbors who sent in letters who live at 70 and 58 Lori Drive, are they next-door neighbors, or are they farther away?
So the Weinbergs are adjacent. They are on the opposite side of the yard from the shed, but we do essentially share one contiguous backyard with each other. And the neighbors at... Was it 58? I can tell you their street address. They are one property removed, also on the same side of the street. So I can see their kids in the backyard, they can see mine.
Sure, thank you. When you said that you replaced the shed when you moved in five or six years ago, was that shed on a concrete base? Or...
No.
Okay, there was no permanent base underneath?
No, there was no permanent base. And I should have been clear, there is no permanent base under this shed. It is a prefabricated shed sitting on block.
Okay, and you did just a moment ago mention that there are trees. I see on the plan that you submitted a tree canopy, and it looks like there's a few dots. Are those the tree trunks near where the current existing shed?
Yeah, those two dots are the canopy on my property, and then the property immediately adjacent has several more that create that canopy.
Right, and would you say that if you had to move the shed to better... Or to reduce the variance that's being requested, it would be hard to place because of those trees?
So as I'm looking at this drawing, and you as well, perhaps in portrait mode, a left and right movement would not be impeded by any major existing tree canopy. A movement towards the street down on the portrait would be a little challenging to meet the five foot. It wouldn't be tight, it wouldn't be impossible, but it would be tight.
Right, and then a question about the shed as it sits there. I believe you had mentioned before that the construction of it, the materials and such are consistent. Would you say they're consistent with what's in the neighborhood?
Yes, I would. I won't say that every neighbor has a backyard shed, but many do. This one is wooden construction, T111 siding, shingle roof, eaves trough on the front. It is in good repair. It is not, in my opinion, nor has any of my neighbors complained of it being unsightly.
Right, and for one of the suggestions you made of potentially making it a smaller shed, I would assume, is that a new shed that you would purchase and then replace the current one with?
Yes, and I would very much say that on my... Of the feasible alternatives, and I'll sidebar for just a moment. I am an engineer by trade, so I did my very best to present to you what I thought would be feasible alternatives. I would say that replacement is the very least feasible alternative of what I presented to you. I would prefer not to have to remove an existing shed and replace it with a smaller facility.
And you say it's the least feasible for what reasons?
Well, let me change words, maybe not least feasible.
Desirable?
Least preferred, yes. We can go with preferred desirable. Simply because it would require me not only to just move a shed, I would have to fully remove this existing shed from the property and replace it with a two-foot shorter shed than what sits there today.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Madam Chair, Mr. Latif, I got a couple of questions. Mr. Cooper, just... I know you already told us this, I want it just for the record.
Sure.
So in the back, Birchwood Elementary, correct?
Yes, Birchwood Elementary School.
Is in the back of your yard?
Yes, I can see the fourth-grade wing when the leaves fall.
Okay. And you have only two feet between your shed and the property of the Birchwood, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is back there? Do you have a fence in the back, or what's going on in the back?
Sure, so my property, and I would say every other property up and down the street, down at least to the next intersection, there is a wooded buffer between the Lori Drive neighborhood properties and the property of the school district. That buffer exists on school district property. It's probably at its narrowest at my property, at about 75-foot of small tree vegetation between my backyard and the school. Adjacent properties, that does widen out in both directions to, I think I cited approximately 100 feet typical. So there is a heavy vegetated buffer. Many of the properties have worn footpaths where schoolchildren will make their way to school. There does exist a wooded, a worn path in my backyard. It's difficult to see from the school property. So it's not... I've never had occasions of schoolchildren wandering into my backyard.
Okay, so you don't... There's no fence in there, right?
There is no fence.
Okay. And you've never had any issue of kids walk into your property? And you're saying it's about 100 feet away?
I'd say the wooded buffer on the school property, immediately abutting my property, is about 75-foot. As it gets further away from the school, that gets wider.
Okay.
And as you get to the neighboring properties of mine, that buffer becomes wider.
Okay. Let me add one more question. What are you storing in that shed? I know you talked about some tools, and you do volunteer garden and so on. So what do you store in that shed? And is the size necessary? That you needed that size to store certain tools in there?
Yes, so I won't give you a complete inventory, but there is a riding lawnmower, there's a push mower, there is a walk-behind tiller for my garden. There is a pressure washer. There are several bikes that are stored in there seasonally through the winter. So then there is a collection of hand tools, shovels, rakes, that sort of implements.
So it sounds like the size that you have, it's needed for all the stuff you have. Because you don't want to keep them outside in the winter and so on.
No, no. If I thought I could get away with bigger or afford bigger, I would have asked.
Especially this summer with all the rain we had.
Yes.
Okay, last question for you. On that shed, for you to access it, where is the door on the shed? Is it to the back of the school? Is it to the side of your property?
Excellent question. Two doors. There is a personnel door facing my house in the street, away from the school. Just a single 36-inch wide door. And then, as you're looking at the sketch, on the right-hand side, there are a pair of double doors, nominally, I think, about six-foot wide, so that I can drive the riding mower in and out on that end.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the questions.
Any other board members having questions?
Yes, Madam Chairperson. Mr. Cooper, I'm Richard Green.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well.
If you would just favor me with an additional moment of your time?
Absolutely.
At the time that you moved in and you took down the old shed and put in the new shed, which is just a little bit bigger than the original footprint, did any of your neighbors complain?
No. None of my current neighbors were my neighbors at the time, but I did consult with the property owner, Liliana Javier's property, the previous owner there. I certainly consulted with them straight away about several things. You know, we trimmed some limbs on trees on the neighboring line and such like that to make ready access to the backyard. So yes, I did speak with the neighbors and no one complained.
And so since the time they moved in until now, have any of your neighbors ever complained to you about the shed?
No, sir.
When you're standing on the roadway, looking at the front of the house, looking toward the backyard, looking toward the shed on the left-hand side from the roadway, just for the record, what does a person see?
From the street, what would one see? At this time of year, not a whole lot through the tree cover. In the wintertime, the shed would be visible, but again obscured by a couple of trees that are immediately in front of it.
Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Cooper.
Appreciate the questions.
Any other board members with questions?
Madam Chair, just a quick question for Laura. Laura?
Yep.
Just a quick question. The previous shed that was there, do we have any record of that shed on that property?
No, that's actually how this came to the zoning board, is when the applicant applied for a pool. He noted the shed on his drawing, and the building inspector did the due diligence of trying to find a permit for the shed just as a research to the property and wasn't able to find one.
Okay, so that shed was there, we have no clue how long?
No, although Elena did ask me earlier today if it could have been pre-existing non-conforming, and I don't think so, because I checked on when this house was built, and it was in 1990. So it couldn't be a pre-existing non-conforming, but people do put their sheds up in the backyard without building permit.
Right, but that answers 1990. If we're going back to pre-existing, what was it, 70s?
Yeah, 71, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you, Laura.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this? Anyone in the audience wishing to be heard? Okay, thank you. At this time, would anyone like to make a motion on this variance?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to approve. The application is written for the following reasons. I don't believe that the benefit can be achieved by other reasonable means. I don't think that this has provided an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, the community has presented this as desirable, and the neighbors that are visible from the backyard also have existing sheds, so it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I don't find that the request is substantial based on the fact that this is a pre-existing footprint with a minimal increase in the square footage. I don't see any reason to believe there are adverse physical and environmental effects. However, this difficulty is absolutely self-created, but that is not determinative. So on the whole, I would move to grant the variance as written.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that application, this is John Hope. I'll second the application, or second the motion, rather, to approve the variances. I would note that with respect to this application, the applicant has completed a very thorough variance application. And with respect to alternative feasible means, he has in fact identified potential other feasible alternatives to the placement of the shed as it is now. However, I am in agreement with Mr. Dolman and the applicant that those alternative means are certainly less desirable to the applicant. And the application as a whole, therefore balancing the various factors, would weigh in favor of approval. And for those reasons, I second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, could the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Frary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes for all the reasons stated, and the willingness of the applicant to give us other ways to establish moving that shed. He was willing, but it's a difficult situation for the yard that he has. And also, I just want to mention that the applicant did write a very nice application, and we thank you for it.
Mr. Dolman?
I vote yes for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated by Mr. Dolman, Mr. Hope, and Mr. Latif.
Mr. Green?
I'm voting a yes for the reasons stated with the caveat that perhaps the request might be considered substantial as opposed to de minimis. However, on balance, that doesn't change the way that I vote on this particular application. So thumbs up, vote yes on this one.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson McGinnis? I vote yes for the reasons stated. The motion has been approved with seven votes. Your variance has been granted, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you all very much for the discussion and your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Would the clerk call our next case, please?
Appeal of Scott Leopard for a variance from Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1426 Valencia Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a garage and a breezeway addition nearer to the property line than the existing structure and partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming residential structure, which brings the addition into a non-conforming side of the rear yard no nearer to the side or rear property line than the existing structure and no nearer than half the distance specified in the particular residential zoning district. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house is 4.91 feet from the sideline. Therefore, 7'6" becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the addition will be 1.91 feet nearer to the property, nearer to the side property line than the existing structure, and will have a three-foot side yard setback. Therefore, both a variance for being 1.91 feet nearer to the side property line and then the existing structure and four feet, six inches side yard setback variance is required. Fifteen notices were mailed, one response.
On September 15th regarding the zoning board letter, "Good morning, I received a letter in regards to Scott Leopard's variance from Section 220-53B. I just wanted to give my full approval for his request, thank you, Bill." Go ahead, Jess.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address and explain your application to us, the need for the variance and what you've done to mitigate that need or reduce it?
Yes, hi. My name is Scott Leopard. I reside at 1426 Valencia Road in Niskuna. The requested variance relates to our existing garage that is really in disrepair. It needs to be torn down and rebuilt back up from scratch. It's really not something that can be repaired at this point. And the way our driveway is structured, we have a very long, narrow, shared driveway in between our house and our neighbor's house. Both our houses are very close to the driveway. There's only room for one car from the road all the way back to the rear of our houses. When we get to the rear, our neighbor's is a sharp right turn, probably basically a 90-degree turn into their garage. Ours is then a sharp left turn into our garage. We really don't have any, we have very little space in the driveway that's not considered the shared driveway space. So for our needs, we feel it's a high priority for us to be able to park in the garage. As the garage stands right now, we hardly ever use the garage except for in the wintertime when we know there's a storm coming because it's so difficult to pull in and out of the space. It's a very sharp turn. We end up oftentimes cutting over the corner of our grass just to get in. We often end up scraping our cars as we get in and out of the garage. So we feel that a little more space in each direction of the garage will be very, very valuable and just being able to utilize the garage on a daily basis. We want to make it a little bit wider and just a little bit deeper so that when we pull in, we have enough, we don't maybe have to take quite a sharp turn as we norm, as we now, and we can pull in comfortably, actually open the doors, get out, walk around our cars and then go into the breezeway that we're gonna be constructing. With the current dimensions, we really, you can get out of the car on one side, the other side, certainly on the right side of the garage, you cannot get out of the car. So anybody that's in the car would have to get out in the driveway and then you'd have to pull the car in and then get out. So that would be a huge negative for us and our family in terms of just being able to utilize that garage space and then get into the house. We've looked into other options with the garage in the yard because of the way it's set up in the rear of the house. There's, I don't believe there's many other options in where, within the yard you could place the garage. I think we're pretty much limited to making that sharp left turn into it. Otherwise, we'd be putting the garage really in the main usable space of our backyard. And there's a large oak tree there, there's power lines. I don't really see that as an option. And it would also be even more awkward for our neighbors if we didn't put it sort of in the general location that it currently is. You know, right now, both us and our neighbors who have that shared space, when we park our cars, not in the garage, we often do just because we both have pretty tight garage spaces. We don't normally park in the garage. It becomes very difficult to pull in and out. We're often coming within inches of each other's cars, almost kind of touching as we're kind of maneuvering to get out of the driveway. So it would be a huge benefit for us to be able to have a little extra space on each direction in the garage, which would allow us to use it on a daily basis and make pulling in and out much easier for us and our neighbors because once our cars are in the garage, it's significantly easier for our neighbors to pull out because they can back right out into the space where our cars would have been parked. So that, those are the main reasons that we're, that we're looking to make it a little bit bigger. I don't believe it's a huge variance. It's a, it is a variance of 1.9, I think, one feet. And I, basically, we really want to be able to utilize our garage on a daily basis. And right now, with the current dimensions, it's, for the most part, it's, it's too much of a pain to pull in and out, so we just don't do it, which is probably not too inconsistent with other properties in the neighborhood that have very small garages. They really don't put their car in the garage because it's, a lot of times, it's just too tight to do so.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the board who has questions?
Mr.?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dolman.
Okay, so then I'll go. I'll try and be fast. So, Mr. Leopard, or Madam Chair, am I good to go? Sorry. Thank you. All right. So I'll tell you, I am inclined to vote to grant this variance, but I want to clarify some things. So just work with me here. So if I understand you correctly, the benefit that you're trying to achieve is to have a usable garage space and currently it's not usable. In fact, you're damaging your cars while doing it. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, I mean, it's usable in the sense that we can actually pull our cars in when we really need to, such as in the wintertime, you know, the benefit. We do have a plow that comes in because we have a shared driveway. We have an agreement with our neighbors that we're gonna have a plow come in, so we always put our cars in the garage when we know there's, you know, snow coming.
Mr. Leopard, I have, I live in your neighborhood and I'm aware of the vintage of these homes that have been created. I also have a garage that I look at and go, ah, how'd they get their car in here? So I'm sympathetic there. But it seems that there's, the only real way that you're gonna be able to use your garage on a regular basis in the way that would be, that would have a benefit to you is to slightly enlarge that garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And if you were to move that garage to, say, a different place in the yard, you would actually have to, it sounds like you may have to take out trees and you'd be eliminating some green space.
We would, very likely, we might be able to squeeze it in without taking out the oak tree, but I don't know. It's, it would be, it would be close. We would, certainly wouldn't be able to do a breezeway at that point. And if we put it, if we tried to shift it, so maybe like if it was straight in from the driveway, from the road as you take the driveway in, we, our neighbors, it would block our neighbors from pulling out because their cars are on a 90-degree angle. So if our garage was straight in, if we pulled in the garage, they'd be able to pull out. But if we, if we parked just short of the garage, it would completely block them from pulling out. So, because there really is, there is only one lane for pulling in and out of that.
Yeah. Got it. So the, is the, the current garage kind of in a state of disrepair? And would you say it would be an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood for you to repair this garage or replace this garage with the bigger one?
Well, it would be. But the, I guess the caveat to that is it's barely noticeable to the neighborhood because it's in the back.
Okay, perfect.
The only ones that would really see it is us and probably our neighbors that we share the driveway with and maybe occasionally the other neighbor that, you know, if they walked around their garage, they would see it. But it's mostly blocked from the neighborhood as it stands or as it will stand or, you know, either way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leopard. Madam Chairwoman, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr.?
Your Hope had questions?
Mr. Leopard, maybe, you may have answered this question and maybe it's just that I misapprehend the application to a certain extent. But the width, you don't need a variance for the increase in the width of the garage. You need a variance because you're, you need an additional 1.91 feet to the side yard of your neighbor on the left looking at your property, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And, and I guess the question is, what would prevent the design from just moving the garage forward with its existing width by 1.91 feet?
Yeah, we did look into that. The problem with that is that the space that we have, actual driveway space, that is not a shared driveway, is not large. So even, there were some pictures and that I sent that you might have seen where if we park, the only place we can park is either in the garage or just short of pulling in the garage. And if we park just short of pulling in the garage, we have to nudge our, front of our car. I leave the, I just leave the garage doors open so I can kind of pull the front end of the garage, of the cars kind of slightly into the opening of the garage so that it leaves enough room for our neighbors to pull in and out behind us. Otherwise, you know, if we're pushing the garage out the other direction, which I would be fine with doing if, if it didn't have this other issue because, because our, yeah, that picture there kind of shows it. That's the best we can do with our cars right there. If we, if we push the garage out in the opposite direction, that means, anytime we don't, anytime we don't park in the garage, we'd be, we'd be almost blocking that lane of where cars have to pull in and out. So that, even, even an extra couple inches is probably problematic because, you know, our neighbors will, will back out, that you can see their cars there too. They back towards our cars and make a tight turn and then pull out forwards. And when they do that, and when we do it the other way, we're, we're almost touching. So there's not much room to go in the other direction.
Okay.
You might be able to pull a little bit, but 1.9 feet would be really pushing it.
All right, Mr. Leopard, that answers my question. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Leopard, this is Keith Frary. I, I just, just to kind of cut to the chase here, as I look at your diagram and I look at your photograph, even moving the, the issue is, as Mr. Hope says, you're closer to the side yard setback. So regardless of whether you move the garage back towards the oak or closer to the house, it doesn't eliminate that issue, correct?
Well, we might be, probably similar to the last person, you could put the garage right in the middle and then you're basically using up in the middle of your garage, backyard. I mean, if you, if we put the garage sort of closer to our other neighbors who we share the driveway with, I mean, we'd have to put it
Right, but
Probably close to their property, you know.
Probably a bad question on my part, but the issue is, is you, by putting in the slightly larger garage, you've now encroached on the side yard setback, which is why you need the variance, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if you slide it towards the house or slide it towards the, the oak tree, as long as you have at that distance from the side yard, you're gonna need a variance, right?
Correct.
Leaving you really, the only option is to move it towards your neighbors, which, as you've explained, just creates a whole nother set of problems because even if it's a 1.9 feet, what you're left with is, is a nightmare in terms of getting in and out of the garage.
Yeah, I'd say that's correct.
Okay. So really, in terms of another feasible option for how you can make this happen and still have a usable garage, there really is a one, right?
We, no, I don't think so. I mean, unless you
I mean, I appreciate you trying to come up with one, but
I, I think any way you did it, you're gonna either be encroaching on one of the two neighbors or other, or you could just put it in the middle, which would really make our backyard kind of useless.
And as the garage sits now, it's still, you know, it's still fairly close to the, to the property line as it sits, right?
Yes.
Okay. So aesthetically, in terms of a change, the fact that you're adding a slightly larger footprint to your garage, it's still gonna be essentially in the same location. Obviously, it's gonna look nicer because you're putting in a new product rather than what's there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the neighbor that you don't share a driveway with, I apologize, I heard a name and I thought a letter. Is that person, have you talked to that person about this?
Yeah, that is not Bill who, who sent the email. Bill, I think it's probably someone across the street.
Okay. How about the person that lives as you face your house, lives to the left?
Yeah, yeah, that is Patricia Cassidy. Yes, I have talked to her about it and, and she has no concerns with that whatsoever.
She hasn't expressed any kind of concern that it's gonna change anything as far as she's concerned?
No, because the only thing it's encroaching on is, is the side of her garage. There's, you know, and it's
That was gonna be my next question. It looks like her driveway, you're sandwiched in between two driveways and it looks like her garage sits facing your garage.
Yeah, and, yeah, I, and I wouldn't be surprised if her garage is even closer to the property line than, than mine will be. Or it's probably very comparable, you know.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on this application?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as written for the following reasons. I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means. In fact, pushing the garage forward, as was stated with another board member's question, would actually encroach on the neighbors as much as it would be a hardship for the applicant. So I don't see any other way to achieve the benefit by other means. I definitely don't believe that this is gonna create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Not only will the aesthetic of a new garage be net positive, but also you can't see the garage from the street for the most part. This request absolutely is substantial at nearly two feet. I don't see any reason to be adverse physical or environmental effects. It is absolutely a self-created difficulty that we're discussing here, however, that's not determinative. And on the balance, that puts me in a position where I would like to move to approve the variance as written.
Thank you. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second, John Hope, I'll second it for the reasons stated.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Linda, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
I'm gonna vote yes on the motion. I agree that I don't think there's any feasible alternative of placing this anywhere else to the sides or to the back or moving it closer to the neighbor. I think you create a whole nother set of problems. I'm gonna steal a page out of Mr. Green's book and I don't feel this is a substantial variance, particularly given the, the size variances we traditionally deal with. But nonetheless, I think that it can't be achieved for any other basis and I don't think there's gonna be any adverse effect on the neighborhood on the, or on the environment. So I'll vote yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes and I'm gonna add that this is a very unique property and very difficult driveway. And for, for all the reasons stated before, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I vote yes for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for reasons stated.
Chairperson McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your, the motion has been approved, your variance is granted. Thank you for joining us tonight and for the complete packet. Your application shows some of the uniqueness of living in Old Niskuna and some of the cases that we see. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Thanks a lot.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Linda, can you call the next case, please?
Appeal by Mark Martin for a variance from Section 220-25B 1A of the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2198 Linwood Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a 4'6" height fence in the front yard. The property is a corner lot and as defined, has front yards on Linwood Drive and Cranbrook Court. Section 220-25B 1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a 4'6" fence As proposed, a four-foot, six-inch high fence will be located in the front yard on Cranbrook Court. Therefore, a six-inch fence height variance is required. Ten notices were mailed out, zero responses.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, describe your application to us and what you've done to mitigate or eliminate the need for variance.
Good evening. My name is Mark Martin. I hope, hopefully everybody can hear me. At this time, we're basically constructing a, a pool in our backyard next month, and we're looking to essentially put in a four-and-a-half-foot fence around it, as opposed to, and part of that fence is clearly going to end up a bit in our side yard. We actually, the main reason that we're looking to do this is, or go with the six-inch higher version, is sheer safety. That's, that's really what it comes down to. I don't feel like the four-foot model of this fence is really going to cut it in our neighborhood, and I'd just like to be a little higher and a little sturdier, especially with all the kids that are playing kind of in the cul-de-sac and really around the neighborhood. At six inches, it doesn't seem like that's very substantial at all.
Anyone from the board have questions for the applicant?
This is John Hope. Laura, I have a question with respect to the pool itself. There can be a, or what is there a height requirement for the fence around the pool itself? Isn't there a 54-inch height requirement for the pool?
Uh, no. I think it can be four feet, but it's recommended to be 54. And our code allows a 54-inch fence in the side yard associated with the pool, but doesn't make the exception for the front yard.
So, so, so would the applicant be able to put a 54-inch fence immediately around the pool, or no?
That's what I'm looking to do, is put a 54-inch fence around the entire pool. And basically, what I'm being told by the building department is this, the one corner that ends up in our side, well, I guess it's called a front yard, is too high, by six inches.
So, Laura, can I just confirm that we, that it is recommended for safety reasons that 54 inches be the height around a pool?
Well, I mean, the code allows.
Recommended.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure that the code even recommends, but I think that it is an accepted practice for safety to go to 54, because we have that exception in our code to allow for 54-inch fences in the side yard when they're associated with enclosing a pool. And they don't have to be on the apron, like to Mr. Hope's question. Like, if this fence was on the apron, it wouldn't actually be in the front yard. So on the apron of the pool, it would be allowed to be 54 with no variance required. But he has it, it's close to the pool, but he has it a little bit, I can imagine.
Yeah.
A little bit away, and that's the reason why, whoops. That's the reason why it needs the.
Laura, so that was, that was my question, really. You could have a 54-inch fence enclosing the apron of the pool to provide for the safety that Mr. Martin is seeking without having, on his diagram, the green line representing where he wants to put the 54-inch fence, correct?
Yeah, it's close, because you can see, like, this line, this, like, long dashed line is actually the delineation between the front yard and probably the rear yard in this case. There really isn't a side yard on this property. But yeah, so it would depend on how big the apron of the pool is. But yeah, I think you could probably squeeze it in without it being in the front yard, but it would be on the apron of the pool.
And, and Mr. Martin, I'll let you, you, you can speak a second, but I just have one other question.
Yeah, you're fine, go ahead.
With, with respect to your diagram here, this, the areas in pink where you're proposing to put your fence, is that currently vegetation?
Yes. It doesn't, yeah, yep, that's pretty much vegetation that kind of comes out from behind our house and pops out.
So there are bushes or trees, or what's it located?
Oh, bushes mostly. I mean, I would say some of that vegetation toward, more towards the house is now not there, but the bushes and other stuff kind of more towards the back corner is still there.
So you would be, you would be removing all of that, correct, to put in your, your proposed fence?
No. The way it's drawn out, I mean, this is a diagram that came out of the, you know, the title and deed and everything. I mean, if you were to walk out my yard right now, it's not entirely accurate. Coming off the corner, the back corner of our house, that vegetation is actually closer to the Cranbrook Court. And obviously, the green line or where the pool is situated is actually much closer to where the actual fence is proposed, too. So, I mean, this, the, the plan was submitted by Caribbean Pools, who's doing our pool. I don't quite know why there's such a distance between the orange pool and the green fence line, but upon being installed, it's going to be about five feet, which is a three-foot apron and a two-foot buffer.
Um, as it's written now, it appears to me, and I'm not sure I have the dimensions, at least, towards the area that is the part of the fence line that you'll need the variance for. It looks far greater than five feet there.
Right.
Looks like 15, 20 feet.
It does. And I'm not quite sure why that is. Like I said, I mean, we, we had Caribbean Pools out here a couple times. They, as a company, they are the ones that submit the paperwork in, on our behalf. I'm not quite sure why the pool was pushed quite that far over. But, um, yeah, like I said, that's, that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you.
I mean, if you were to walk off the back corner of our house, like I said, draw a straight line, straight back off the corner of our house, we're looking at situating the pool, you know, about five feet off of that. Why it's pushed over that far in the diagram, I don't, I don't quite know. But I mean, if we were to go that far to the left, we'd be pushing pretty close to our neighbor's lot, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Any other board members have questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, a couple of questions. Mr. Martin, this is Nick Latif. Just again, you know, some of the question I asked you, just to put it on the record, usually fences of six-feet fence in the front, we don't approve. I understand the 54 inches and having them around the pool for safety purposes and all this. The question I have for you, the part that is in the front, like, if cars are driving by, would it block the view for drive, for drivers to see the side of the road or to be able to see other cars?
No, it's nowhere near the road. I mean, it, I would say it's easily 15 or 20, could be 25 feet from the road. And like I said, it's partly behind, you know, bushes and vegetation. The cul-de-sac just runs essentially past our house, and kind of the reason that our side yard is pushing into our, I guess you call it a rear yard, is simply because a cul-de-sac opens up as it passes our house into a circle. And that's why this, this fence is kind of getting kicked into that, that, that portion by, I mean, I, I, you know, three or four feet, it sounds like.
Okay, so somebody going around, driving, it's not going to block them?
Oh, my gosh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even notice it. I mean, you wouldn't, your eye, I don't even think your eye would catch it. It's that far off the road. I mean, honestly, I could say it's, it's 20, 20, 25 paces off the road. I mean, people drive by all the time. I don't even think they would notice a real fence there unless there are people, I guess, you know, having a pool party or something like that, but.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, can I go for the hat-trick tonight? Thank you very much. All right. So, I, Madam Chair, I would like to move that we grant the application as written for the following reasons. The benefit cannot be achieved by other means. In fact, this is in keeping with generally accepted safety practices for pools. It's not going to cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I honestly don't see that a six-inch delta coming over the corner of a funky-shaped lot, like, I, I got to tell you, I, I, not only am the owner of a garage that is too small for modern cars, I am also the owner of a funky-shaped corner lot. So I, I don't see this as a substantial request. I don't see any reason for adverse physical or environmental effects. And while the alleged difficulty is absolutely self-created, on the, that is not determinative, and on the balance, I'd move to grant the application as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Linda, can you please call the roll? Mr. Frary?
I'm, I'm going to vote yes, but I want to make a caveat here because I think we need to be very careful when we're placing on the record that this is a generally accepted safety practice. The town itself recommends, I think is the best way I can put it or approaches it, and it's, it's typically a 54-inch fence, but I think generally, if you look at the pools that are being installed, they're much closer to the pool and providing safety features to that pool. Typically, we deal with these, the difference between four and six-foot fences in these situations. I think that the added six inches is not going to be aesthetically a problem. I think that, given the location of the fence, the fact that there's vegetation there, and it's, it's a fairly small section that we're talking about, and it's consistent with the rest of the fence around. We're not looking at a change from six to four, or six to 54. We're, we've got a consistent fence all the way around. So for those reasons, I think that, that I'll vote yes on the, on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes for the reasons stated. Thank you.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated as amplified and clarified by Mr. Frary.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, I will vote yes with the caveat that I, I do believe there was an alternative, alternative placement of the 54-inch fence that was proposed, that was feasible, but under the mitigating factors put forward by both Mr. Dolman and Mr. Frary, I will vote yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I also vote yes. That's seven yeses. Your variance has been granted. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Laura, do we know what the status of next month's meeting is?
Yeah, we had to do this one virtually because of the notices that went out before that they changed the hybrid, but I would expect that next month we will be hybrid in person again. So anybody who wants to be home, no problem, but anybody who wants to come can come, and we'll be broadcasting it from Town Hall. That's my expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned until next month. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Take care.
Be well.